Autism Sprender. Think Equally, yeah. It's time to give the power back to the people. We're fighting to make our beliefs equal. Look at the failed policies and how they treat you. We got strength, yeah, we're fire from people. This is for anyone with autism or disability. Time to unite, show them how strong our will can be. Move readily, we're promoting equity. A nonprofit platform, that's the recipe. Now throw your hands up, we finally got a winner. Seek equity with Autism Sprender. Now throw your hands up, we finally got a winner. Seek equity with Autism Sprender. It's time to make a change. It's time to stand up for what we believe in. Equality and equity across the board. No matter your race, nation, agree disability or your needs. It gotta be equal. It gotta be right.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, guys. What's up, what's up? I hope everyone's having a good day. Today is nine eleven and, you know, it's a day that we could never forget. So we definitely have to make sure we acknowledge nine eleven. But today, we're here with a parent advocate and wears multiple hats. And we just kind of wanna, on a parent level, on a community level, and on an advocate level, just talk about many, you know, many of the things that are happening, you know, civically around education and, you know, bringing it down to just everyday people's language, right? And just coming from us. And I just wanna bring Stephanie in so we can kind of talk about your thoughts around, what do you feel about school committee? Do you feel like they should be elected? Should they be appointed? What are the pros, what are the cons? And as a parent, do you even know what the role of the school committee is in your district? So we're gonna chop it up with Stephanie. What's up, girl?
Hey, Jaihaide, how are you?
Doing good.
Thanks for having me on, as always, it's a pleasure.
Yeah, yeah. So Steph, let's get right into it. Tell us, first of all, tell us a little bit about you. Tell us, like, you know, for those that didn't catch, when you were on the Parent Power series that we did, you brought some real, a lot of knowledge on IEP because you really, you're in that space, you do a lot of advocacy, do legal advocacy in that space. And just kind of tell us a little bit about you and, you know, why this conversation is important.
Right, so my name's Stephanie Rodriguez Ruiz and I am an education attorney. I work at the Children's Law Center in Lynn and we are in Essex County. And so I take a lot of cases in Essex County. It's a nonprofit organization. I'm also a parent and I have a son in special education and another son who was recently diagnosed with autism. And I live in Boston, so my oldest is 14 years old. So I've been a parent navigating special ed system for many years now in Boston Public Schools. So I'm wearing multiple hats as an advocate, as a parent, and also understanding how it is to be a parent prior to being an advocate, prior to being an attorney, and not knowing anything about special education as well.
Right, right. And that's a mouthful right there because it's true. Like, this getting involved civically, we know as parents, is not easy. So much language that you gotta decode. There's multi-layers to just getting involved in your school district, just on like the Special Education Parent Advisory Board, on the Parent Teacher Council, on the School Site Council, like so many councils, a lot of meetings, a lot of words. But today, you know, we wanna kind of talk about a lot of what's transpiring in Boston Public Schools around the school committee. And it's not just Boston Public Schools. We have many different communities throughout the Commonwealth who have similar situations, you know, but Boston, as usual, it's a big city, it's the main city in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, you know, City of Boston always gets a lot of airtime around these issues. So talk to us about, talk to us, talk to us about, like, what are your thoughts about this? Because I don't know how I feel about it. You know, you know, I text you all the time as an attorney. I'm like, I don't know, girl, like, there's something about things.
It's a hot topic. So first, I wanna say, as residents of the City of Boston, it's hard for us to get engaged civically, right? Because a lot of us are working parents. A lot of us, you know, we're just trying to keep our head above water, pay our bills, take care of our kids. We're lucky if we can get our kids enrolled in, you know, extracurricular activities and still be home in time to cook dinner, get the kids in the tub, and get in bed and start it all over again. So just the thought of even being involved in advocacy or doing something else is draining. So when we talk about the school committee and we talk about all these parent-teacher conferences and, you know, different groups and we talk about the SPECT PAC in Boston, who calls us all the time and tells us, "Join this meeting and join that meeting." It can be really overwhelming. It's a lot. So the school committee, really, what we do is we entrust them to make important decisions for our kids because we can't always be involved in every single aspect of education for our children. And so the best part about the school committee is that we have an opportunity, at least, to elect members into the school committee and say, "Look, we're entrusting you to be, to sit on this committee and to make the tough decisions for our kids." Except, the difference between Boston and every other district in the state of Massachusetts is Boston is the only district in the entire state that does not elect its school committee members. And that's, that's really important. That's interesting because it's the biggest school district in the entire state and it's the only one that doesn't elect the school committee members. In fact, the school committee members are appointed by the mayor. That's a big thing. So that's the first big point. So, you know, this is something that a lot of people have been talking about for a long time. And Jaihaide, you could jump in whenever you want. But we've been talking about this for a while and it's like, "Well, is this good, is this bad?" You know, "Do we wanna appoint this school committee? Why aren't we?" And that's the, that's the hot ticket, you know, question.
So I'll be transparent with you, right? Here in Randolph, this came up on our last elections, which is the reason why I actually ran for school committee in the last town elections here in my community. Because they were throwing this idea of electing, appointing school committee members. And I'm like, "Whoa, whoa, 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 whoa." Like, this is like, this is not democratic. This is not allowing the people's voice. Like, you guys can't do this. This is a district of predominantly Caribbean islanders. Majority of our student body, you know, come from other countries. And I'm like, "No." And then also, you know, we know the political world, right? It's inequitable. There's a lot of inequity issues that we can sit here and talk about all day. And I honestly, years later, I'm thinking differently about this. Because I'm realizing, and I know we talked a little while ago, that many things that we discuss in the equity space and we change oftentimes hurt the same people that we're trying to ensure are not hurt by failed policies and procedures. School committee in Boston, and you know, I'm not, I can't speak up for Bostonians and all this, but it was predominantly a white school committee, if I'm not mistaken, which is where the equity part came in this conversation. And that's when, I believe, former Mayor Marty Walsh started appointing people. And he chose the people. And I really don't understand that process. Can you tell us a little bit of like, about how that process worked for, for how people were appointed? Did people have to fill out an application? Was it like an application committee? Who seen the applications, reviewed the applications? You know, they advised the mayor who to pick, you know what I mean? Like, do you know about that process?
So admittedly, I'm not too familiar with the process for being appointed as a school committee member because I've never tried to be on the school committee. And actually, this kind of segues into a really good part because the problem is, this is the problem, is that when we're in school, in Boston Public Schools, they don't teach us about civic engagement. You know, there are no classes about local government. There's no classes about civil, you know, city councilors or what their role are, what the role of the school committee is. We don't know anything about local politics. And that's why, you know, on my Facebook page, I'm really political. So I post a lot about, you know, the mayoral candidacy and what's going on now and about city government. And I don't get a lot of interaction from a lot of the people I went to school with. And I don't know if that's because people are shying away from politics or if that's because people are just not familiar with politics. But to, I guess, to answer your question is, even I don't know that process and how a city, a school committee member is elected because that process is not, that information is not readily available.
Right.
You have to, you have to really go out and search that information. So, I mean, my assumption would be that, you know, you would, you would reach out to the City of Boston and get an application out there when there is a vacancy and there is an application process, just like with any vacant position in city government or in any city government position. But just like with any vacancy in a city government position, you know, there is going to be, we know that it's not always equitable. We know that the people who know people are going to get into positions. It's who you rub elbows with. I don't necessarily know that it's going to, you know, it's going to be based on how, you know, what you've done in the past. I don't know if it's gonna be based on what your resume has. I don't know if your accreditation or your credentials are really going to be the main deciding factor. Because, let's just keep it real, the deciding factor is who you know and what, you know, what you can do for that person or what they can do for you. So, I mean, it's a quid pro quo. So, I mean, and I would assume that that would be the process in applying for a school committee position. But either way, it's, I mean, is it, is it fair? Is it equitable? I mean, can, can anyone just apply to be a school committee member?
Again, requirements, because like, as you're talking, you know me. I'm like, "Well, I'm gonna look because I don't know either." And I'm pretty, you know, knowledgeable to some extent about certain things, right? I'm just, I honestly don't know. And so I'm here, Google. First of all, for those that don't know, the City of Boston is comprised of 13 members. The mayor appoints these members. There is a nomination panel that's composed of parents, teachers, principals, and representatives of businesses in higher education. So let me kind of jump into what else it says. But it doesn't say, you know, it doesn't share if you have to have any, like, previous educational, like if you, you know, if you ever worked in a nonprofit, if you ever, you know, were a teacher. It doesn't, I don't see a lot of that information. And I'm, you know, even looking at what the nomination, the committee nominating panel looks like. So I wanna screen share so people can see what we as parents see when we Google these things, right? So this is what comes out when you're looking at the school committee, right? When you're looking at, if you're searching it up. So again, right here, it says, "The mayor appoints new school, new school committee members from a list of candidates recommended by 13 members nominating panel composed of parents, teachers, principals, and representatives of businesses in higher education." And here you will see the meeting minutes so that parents like yourself and I can, you know, stay informed about whatever conversations are happening. Let's see when the next school committee meeting is. It looks like there was one recently. And, you know, it just kind of gives you rules of public comment, rules of conduct at meetings convened by school committee, broadcast, they're broadcasted on the mayor's office cable communication. So you can find these typically on YouTube. They're live streamed so parents can re-watch them if you're interested in learning about any upcoming conversations. It gives you a point of contact.
Right, but you have to know, you know, just think about this, Jaihaide. You have to know if there's a vacancy before you even apply, right? And so there's a, there's a certain level of knowledge that you have to have before you can even apply for that position. Whereas if they were elected, then, you know, there's a difference, right? Because you know, once people start running for election and they start knocking on doors to get, you know, signatures to be, you know, to be on a ballot, then you start realizing, okay, well, there's a position open, you know? So I think that there's a little bit more transparency with the process and if people are elected to the school committee. I think that's, that's a little better. But, but then there's, there's a whole nother thing that I've been thinking about. So, you know, naturally, I think with the democratic, the democratic process, what you said, Jaihaide, is, you know, in the end of the day, we wanna be able to elect people into positions of power and to end in decision-making power. Because our tax dollars are paying for the school system, right? So to be able to, I mean, if we're smart enough to pay taxes, we're smart enough to elect people into those positions, right? But then, then there's another part to this that has me a little torn and, you know, and I don't wanna argue against electing school committee members because I think that we should elect them. But I think that there's another parts of this that we really need to speak about and if we're gonna keep it real, let's just say it. If we're gonna elect school committee members, then we need to go out there and vote. Because the problem is, if we don't, as black and brown people specifically, if we don't go out and vote for school committee members, then we know who is voting. And we know what areas, what geographical areas in the City of Boston are going to show up to vote. And we know that's gonna be West Roxbury. We know that's gonna be Rosendale. You know, my heart, we know certain parts of Dorchester that have been gentrified are gonna go out to vote. And we know that those areas don't necessarily reflect our community and the, and don't necessarily reflect the school system and the children in our schools. So we have to be very careful for this not to backfire. If we're going to demand that the school committee members are elected by the community, then we better go out and vote. Vote wide. School committee member is going to be very white. And I'm not trying to play this, you know, make this a color thing, but we gotta be very, you have to be honest.
You gotta be real.
Have this conversation. If, we can't demand change within our communities and then ignore the real issues and not go out and vote. Because we all voted when the presidential elections came up and we all had an opinion and we all were, you know, I couldn't scroll down my feed without seeing something about Trump or something about Biden or, you know, candidates. But then I barely see anyone speaking about, you know, the mayoral candidates. I barely see anyone speaking about the city councilors that are running. And we have some really great talent running right now. And I would hate, I would hate to have us work this hard to have school committee members elected in the school committee and then turn around and have it just completely backfire by having zero representation in the committee. So that's really important.
So Stephanie, you kind of said it, also identifying that in certain races politically, there's more voter turnout, obviously, when there's a mayor's race and then when there is a presidential race. So when there is a non-presidential race and a non-mayoral race, the voting numbers look totally different, right? So the question also becomes, would it help or would it not help? Because if we know the numbers look different based on, you know, political races, how is that gonna end up? Because for people who don't understand, right? And I want us to kind of stress this. For people who don't understand the power of the school committee, it is very important for parents to really understand the power that the school committee members hold. The school committee in each city and town and each region school district shall have the power, and this you will find on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts laws, right? And, which is also, it's in the comment section here so that you can read the law. It says, "Shall have the power to select and to terminate a superintendent. Shall review and approve the budget." I'm gonna say it again, "The budget for public education in the district and shall establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district consistent with the requirements of law and statewide goals and standards established by the Board of Education." Department of Education, y'all, dusty. "The school committee in each city, town, and regional school district may select a superintendent jointly with other school committees and the superintendent shall serve as the superintendent of all the districts that selected him or her."
Right.
That's pretty powerful, y'all.
Yeah, so just, just think about that. Like, I want people to really stop and think. Is Biden gonna make the decision as to whether or not there's going to be more social workers in your child's school? No. Is Biden gonna make the decision as to whether your superintendent looks like your child? No. Is Biden going to make the decision as to whether there's going to be a better HVAC system in your school? No. This is the role of your school committee. This is what they do. When you're, when you go to school, when you're, when we complain about the school buses, when we complain about the schools being extremely hot in the summer, when we complain about there not being enough special education resources, when we complain about teachers being able to just skate by and not, and not holding them accountable for not teaching our children, when we complain about all these things, we have an opportunity to really, really make a difference. And by doing so, we need to become more engaged in local government, in local politics. And that's why it's important for us to really go out and vote. That's why it's important for us to really understand the role of the school committee. And I don't mean to, and I wanna just backtrack a little bit because I don't mean to, I guess, sound like I'm coming down on our residents because, in a sense, I am. But in another sense, I understand because we weren't, like I said, we weren't taught this in school. We don't, we, we're just trying to keep our head above water, and myself included. But, but it's important now that we, at least, take whatever time we do have to focus on this because as parents, it is our responsibility. I can watch, I can watch a video on Facebook, I'm gonna keep it real. I can watch a video on Facebook of two people fighting and I can see hundreds and hundreds of views of someone fighting someone on Blue Hill Ave. And I'm seeing hundreds and hundreds of views. But, but we'll do a live like this and there'll be four views. But we're telling some facts about how your.
Really didn't share, no? Yeah.
And so this is really, this is really important. And I think that people really, really need to, really need to think about these things because the school committee is extremely powerful. I'm talking about so powerful in our child, in our children's education. I mean, these are our babies. This is, to me, my kids are gold. This is like, this means everything to me. Like, the most important thing and anything in my life is my, are my children. And if I'm going to, if I wanna be able to do anything, it's to influence the type of education that they can get. So working the school committee is important. But I really need my brothers and sisters, my friends, my family, people like you and I, we all need to come together. We need to hold hands, we need to walk to those booths, to those voting stations, and we need to vote. Because if we don't vote, then that school committee is gonna be whiter than February vacation.
Right, than a snowy day. Listen, it's true, and it's true. And anybody who knows me personally and knows the space of Autism Sprender, that we wanna have those uncomfortable conversations and really address equity in a real way. Not like the soundbite way and not the way that we're all kind of comfortable with the conversation. Because race, the race conversation itself is very uncomfortable. And not a lot of, and a lot of people don't wanna have it because it just brings up some feelings. You know, some people believe that race is really not a barrier where, you know, some of us is like, "Yeah, that's not true." Because, you know, for, you know, for many things, you know, we can discuss the difference of public schools in predominantly black and brown communities, right? And the constant struggle of our children not being able to read and write versus if you go to a school district like Newton Public Schools, right? They have all the social services that you can need. The children are performing, you know, their school properties, you know, they maintain the school properties, you know. There are struggles in every school district, but when we're talking about equity, we just don't understand why is it that in the black and brown community there's a constant fight for things that all children in all school districts should have, whether their families have the financial means or don't have the financial means. At the end of the day, public education is paid by taxpayers.
Right, and it's important to say, you know, because I don't want it to come across as if, you know, I'm anti-white or anti-Cupuchin because that's not the case. What I, what I really want to, I really wanna get out is that we're looking for representation is what we need. We want the school committee to reflect the schools. And in the schools that we're seeing and in the schools that my son has went to, it's majority of the students in the school are black and brown and the majority of the teachers are not. And so I think it's important for our children to be taught and our children and the people in the decision-making positions to be those who can relate to our children and who represent our children. And unfortunately, we know that the people who are in those positions are people who can, who are similar to our children. It's not, it's not, it's not a question about, it's not a question about one race over the other. It's just representation.
Right.
And, and of course, it would be, of course, it's great to have white school committee members as well because of course, we are, we have to acknowledge the fact that Boston has a large white population as well, you know? But I think that it's important that if, we have to point out that if we do elect the school committee and we don't go out and vote, that it will be 100% white school committee members.
And we gotta see who the backing's in, right? Because as a parent, you know, I have, I have my moments. Sometimes I'm like, "I don't even know why I vote because nothing changes." And then there's times that I say, "You know, I'm happy I voted because this could've went this way," right? And we understand that it's hard. We understand getting civically engaged is hard. And, and we understand that watching political campaigns, you know, you gotta be observant of the people who endorse them, how these people who endorse certain individuals, how they vote in their own space. You know, are they connected in the black and brown community? Are they, you know, is equity part of their agenda? You know, and talking about that. And also, like, kind of going back to what you're saying is that, also, like, for me, I've always wondered why, and again, again, I know race is uncomfortable, guys, but we just really wanna unpack this with you guys and get your input. We're not saying no race is better than the other. We're just trying to unpack and try to see why we have so many inequities and how we can build to a better equitable world, right? why we have so many inequities and how we can build to a better equitable world, right? Majority of the teachers who, well, now, I mean, I know that there's always been a Boston, you know, residency requirement. Um, but many of the Boston public schools and not just Boston public schools, because here in Randolph, we see the same thing. Uh, majority of the teachers who work in our commu- in our school districts often don't live in our community. So it's that they're disconnected from our community. They're disconnected oftentimes from the struggles that many of our children and our families are impacted by. Um, because they're not in our community and they're not subjected to the, you know, whether, whatever it is, whether it's a lack of social services, whether it's a lack of, you know, mental wellness services, whether it's the lack of extracurricular activities, um, lack of transportation. Cause you know, here in Randolph, you know, we only have one bus rule, right? And so that's like, that's hard. So, you know, the kids in this community gotta work in fast food places here in the community again, which is not a bad thing. But if we wanna teach them and get them out of the community, like, they have to either go through like commuter rail or one bus that doesn't operate like Boston where there's like around the clock constant bus, you know what I mean? So like, just unpacking all of that, but again, to kind of understand why we have more white teachers in our schools and what is the benefit? Because I've always had this question, what is the benefit of people working in the industry of public schools versus charter versus private? What is the pay difference? What is the, you know, what are the benefits, what are not the benefits? Like, and I just, I'm just wondering why we can't move towards having a more culturally diverse school buildings to ensure that we can kind of be committed for kids to have opportunities to be connected with people that look like them, um, speak their language, understand their cultural values and norms and, 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 you know, uh, the things that they celebrate in their community. I just don't understand why we're still in this conversation.
It's, it's really interesting, Jaheida, because sometimes I get really, um, I get frustrated. I want everyone to know that you can go online right now and Google your teacher in Boston, you can Google your child's teacher's salary.
Right.
Because I know that my child's teacher's salary last year was over a hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
Um, my child's teacher's salary was about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, so I want people to understand that, um, not all, uh, public school teachers are, um, struggling financially, and so there is really no reason why our children should be behind the ball, um, in, in academics. But I, I do wanna say this, and I wanna just backtrack a little bit real quick. Jaheida, one of the things you said, when sometimes you say, well, why should I even vote, like, it's not gonna make a difference or, you know, like, why does it matter? And then, and then you had mentioned something about, you know, thinking like, there's so many things to unpack, there's so many different areas to think about. But, um, again, I'm gonna hold our people accountable because I can't tell you how many people I know that will go into the world's rabbit hole about Illuminati. They'll go, Illuminati till the death of them. They'll tell me about which celebrity is into Illuminati and how this happened, when that happened and that, and this and who and that, and when you ate this and this, that, and that one, this means that. And it's like, okay, well, if you're so, if you have this time and you're so invested into thinking into like a conspiracy theory or thinking into something, and I'm not saying, I'm not gonna say whether I believe in Illuminati or not, but I'm just gonna say, take that energy and put it into your local, um, issues. Okay, well, if you're so interested, look at housing. If you wanna really dig into something, look at these developers who are coming into Boston and buying public housing. Look at how they're pushing our people out of Boston. Get into something, let's talk about redlining in the city of Boston. Stuck into certain areas of Boston historically for many, many, many years. Or candidates talking about rent control, we have some candidates talking about, um, selling certain, um, public housing to certain developers, research that, see how that's gonna affect you, because that really affects you. Not whether Illuminati, what really affects you is going to be whether or not you're going to be able to stay in Boston and afford your rent tomorrow because this developer has just came in and decided that they're gonna buy up this entire property and turn them into condominiums. Offer you some affordable housing, right? Lottery and you're gonna get some luxury affordable housing, which is gonna be not affordable at all.
Right.
So, I'm just saying, I think there is a space for us to really, really look into some of these issues. And I think that if we're really going, you know, you can pick whatever issue it is, whether it's housing, whether it's, um, you know, education, if you're a parent, um, whether it's the school committee, uh, whether it's, you know, special education, you, whether you're into mass and cash and the opioid crisis. You know, you can get into certain areas, um, COVID and health insurance and things like that. And, and, and take the opportunity to look into that because really it's local government which really affects us directly.
Time.
That's what affects us directly. It's not, yes, on the national level, it's important to know who you're, of course, important to know who our senators is, and that's important too. It's important for the pres- you know, to vote for the president. But really, I can't stress enough how important it is to get involved locally.
Right.
And with this, this, um, school committee issue.
Is big. Is big, and then it's kind of like going back to the budget part, right? Because as special education parents, we're constantly asking like, where's the money's at? What, where, how do y'all spend our dollars, right? And for those parents who don't understand, may not understand special education, our children who have individualized educational plans bring extra monies into our school district. So let me kind of see in Google real quick, or maybe Stephanie, uh, if you know. Let's say, and this is just an example, and I'll drop the link for us to kind of learn with each other. That, let's say, uh, the federal dollars that are given to school systems, whether it's through federal or state funding, it's, let's say for a student without an IP is fourteen thousand. A year, a year, an academic year. So every year, the federal and the state funding sources give your school district a certain amount of money um, to help improve whether it's, it's staffing, you know, resources or whatever it is to your child's school. So a child who has an individualized educational plan as well as a five oh four, the government gives more dollars for a child with a disability or learning difference, right? High needs or however everybody wants to kind of, you know, talk about it. Because, you know, some parents are so used to saying special education, some parents say learning differences. You know, I usually kind of stick to unique learners and some people using learning, you know, high needs. You know, the language varies from person to whatever makes each person comfortable. Um, but let's say it's fourteen thousand dollars. Your child is also bringing in an additional, let's say, five thousand dollars. So that now makes that twenty-one thousand dollars, right? Wait, no, yeah, uh, no, twenty thousand.
Fourteen was an additional five, that's nineteen thousand.
So see, like, my math is off, yeah. Uh, don't cut school, don't cut, don't cut math, cause I used to cut math all the time. But nineteen thousand dollars. And if you want to know the function of your school committee, you can understand and ask these questions, like, can someone teach me how these dollars are spent? And how, you know, how are they spending, how they broken down specifically into my child's special education services and resources that he or she requires to, um, you know, be academically successful. Uh, and then not to mention that, for those that don't, also don't understand, the other part is that for parents who fight for out of the school district placements, your child's money follows your child wherever they go. So wherever school district they go to or whatever specialized programs they go to, those dollars follow your child. And then even if you're out of the district, some districts have to also pay out of the pocket expensive if the other school district that the child is in, it's either more money and they require additional funding, your school district is responsible to pay those monies, right? But then there's also the flip side is, let's say that an academic school year, um, your school district pays a million dollars for out of the school district placement. There is a certain amount of money that the government also gives back for those out of the district placements, but the school district ain't getting that million dollar back. Let's say it's a million dollars, they'll probably get back like six hundred thousand, right? And those kind of go into like a rainy day fund, just in case there is another situation where another student has to leave the district for the services that he or she requires. So there's a lot of movement of monies and, and unpacking that and it, and these are things that as parents, we should wanna ask and wanna know because if your child who's on an IP cannot get a one-to-one para, you gotta ask why. And that all goes back to dollars, right? It goes back to monies. So if the school district claimed that they don't have money and, but they can't tell you why they don't have the money, you know, you wanna review school budgets, you wanna get familiar with that to see how those individuals who got elected by people like you and I are making decisions to approve the budget. Because again, the school committee approves the budget. So I, I, I've never really attended any Boston Public Schools, School Committee, but here in Randolph, I, I was there every Thursday faithfully, um, almost at every meeting, supported every event, you know, joined CPAC, you know, school side council, I did a lot of that stuff. Um, and it's a full-time job. It's literally almost a full-time job, but the role of the school committee is to kind of condense that, to be the voice of the parents, to see what's happening and making sure that those decisions that they make around policy development or the budget reflect the voices of parents like you and I who are sending those emails to whether it's our principal, our, our, uh, superintendent, our special education, um, directors, that we have some form of representation on that committee. And, so, and kind of like here in Randolph, and I don't really know if Boston does this because Boston is a big school district and there's thirteen school committee members there where here in Randolph, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, eight. So we have eight school committee members. Uh, well, really seven, there's seven school committee members and then one, we have one town council representative who also sits on the school committee. So there's seven, and then the additional is already an elected official who is from the town, you know, that represents the town council and the town as a whole, and it's typically a town councilor at large or sometimes even a district, um, town councillor, and the town council here appoints what school committee member, um, sits also on the school committee, um, on the school committee. And part of what we do here in Randolph, and again, I don't know what Boston does, but each one of our school committee members are responsible to kind of in partnership work with the school. So we have six schools here in the town of Randolph, we have four elementaries, one middle and one high. So each school committee member is literally assigned to a school. And the role of the school committee member is to kind of connect with administration, you know, the teachers, at least participate in some of the events that are happening in the schools, whether it's open house, a holiday party, a potluck dinner, you know, whatever, and just kind of be part of the school culture, um, with, with, with the school they've been assigned to kind of bring back to when they have meetings around issues, around things about developing a new policy, whether it's a communication policy. Because again, these are things that parents need to know. You know, a, a, a school policy, a communication policy is approved and designed by your school committee member. So, you know, for some of us, when we email our school committee and we're like, listen, I emailed my special education director a week ago and they haven't got back to me, school committee members create a policy that says, like most standard businesses, that a teacher or superintendent or someone in, in the staff have forty-eight hours to seventy-two hours to get back to. Right? So these are the individuals who create these policies, right? Um, also work in partnerships with the teachers unions, right? They, 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 they negotiate with the teachers unions and the superintendent to making sure that those contractual agreements, um, benefit not only the teachers but also the students, um, and, and salary increases. So they do a lot of work that a lot of parents don't understand why it is so important to watch and to see what's happening in Boston. Because I think Boston right now is upside down, Stephanie.
We've already had, I mean, we've had so much turnover right now in the Boston School Committee, a lot of it having to do with, um, race. Um, and a lot of it, you know, having to do with some words and things that were said that, um, that, you know, I guess some people had interpreted it as racist. Um, and, you know, I think there, I think what needs to, what needs to happen is, you know, there, I guess, one of the things that we forgot, that we forgot to, or I forgot to mention was that right now, um, the big thing is that city coun- our city councillors, so all the city councillors in the city of Boston are coming together on September fifteenth, and they're going to vote as to whether or not, um, this question, as to whether we should elect the school committee members, whether or not this question is going to be on the ballot in November. So now, if the question is, are we going to come together as residents? We going to email our local city councillors? We have city councillors at large, and then we have, um, each district, so we have city councillors for our districts. You find out which district you live in and email your city councillor for that district. My district is, uh, Ricardo Arroyo, and we have the at-large councillors. You email them and ask them if they're going to vote yes to put this on the ballot in November. And then in November, if they, if they vote yes and it gets on the ballot in November, we all go out. Thankfully, it's during the, um, mayor election, so, you know, hopefully we'll have a high turnout as to whether or not we're going to vote yes or no. And then we'll determine whether we'll vote it. Um, but, you know, um, going back to what you were saying, Jaheida, is, um, the thing is, the ci- the, the school committee members are in charge of doing so many of those things. And if they're elected, then what happens is, we hold them accountable. So we say, hey, look, I emailed you several times about X, Y, and Z, and you haven't done anything to rectify the situation. Um, all of us parents have been emailing you about, you know, the fact that Boston Public Schools doesn't have, uh, you know, a language-based, um, classroom.
Right. Phonics, a phonics curriculum.
Phonics curriculum. We've emailed you several times about this and no one has done anything about it. Remember this when it's time to go to the polls and elect a, a school committee member. That is the leverage that we have, that is the power that we have. We talk about, you know, we the people, when we talk about, um, taxation and representation, this is the power that we have, you know? And so we don't want the mayor to have that power to say, I'm going to appoint you and therefore that person, really, their number one goal is to make the mayor happy because that's the person who's responsible for, you know, to removing the, 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 um, school committee member. We wanna have that power. And so it's important to number one, before September fifteenth, reach out to your city councillors, reach out to the at-large councillors. Julia Mejia, Ricardo Arroyo have already said that they're going to support this, that they're going to put this on the ballot in November. You don't have to reach out to them, they're already on it. But anyone else, reach out to them, get on their Facebook pages, get in their email.
Twitter, on their Instagram.
Yes, get and say, hey, are you going to do this? Um, and really have them put this on the ballot in November. But most importantly, Jaheida, if we're going to elect our school committee, go out and vote for the school committee members.
Yes.
You don't want this to turn around and backfire.
Right, and, 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 and I'm glad that you keep stressing that because as you know, we, we've done our own personal space on other work that we're doing around mass and caste and inequities and that, right? Um, we see how a lot of these things can backfire and hurt the marginalized and the oppressed community more than it can help them. So it is important that as parents, if you're invested, and, and listen, guys, I totally get it because, you know, it's hard, you know, being home with the children, especially children with severe disabilities and disabilities at all, and even kids in general, right? It's whole hard. It is hard to deal with your family and your own present, personal stressors and all that to then try to follow political trends, you know, and, and see. and and see how people are voting on behalf of your community and how they represent you while they're sitting at these tables. I get it's hard, but it's also our civic right to ensure that things that we 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 vent about, right? Cause I don't consider things complaining. I consider them venting because frustrated, it's experienced, you're just like, yo, why this keeps happening, is that you paying attention? And if you feel as a parent or someone who's involved civically and believes the school committee members should be elected, yo, you better be ready to be hitting them streets. And campaigning these streets in communities with low voter turnout.
Right, right.
Backfire and then we wonder why, then we'll end up in Boston Public Schools possibly going into receivership.
Yep, that's why I say
District, imagine that's to go into receivership.
Oh, that would be horrible. But you know, Jaheida, that's why I say, like, look, you see this? It's at our fingertips. This is at our fingertips. We have so much at our fingertips. If you can't go out there and really like inform yourself on some of these issues, follow me on Facebook, follow Jaheida on Facebook. There are so many people I follow on Facebook. Um, top of my head, Carlos Amnakis, right? I follow him on Facebook. That I learn from him all the time. You know, sometimes I may agree with things, sometimes I may disagree with things. But that's good, right? Because that helps me to know like what it is that I'm, that where's my lane, you know? And and follow your city counselors. All, I mean, you, then all you really need to do is just scroll through Facebook, right? But this is another thing, my family gets so annoyed with me. My mom, my sister, my cousins, I be texting them, you guys can vote. I'm tell, I tell people all the times that go vote. Well, even if you can't go out there and campaigning, go to your low voter areas. Get, call your friends, call your cousins, call your sisters, your parents, whatever, just, hey, go out and vote and tell them to go out and vote. Very, very important. This is important for our community. It's important for our babies. Our baby, y'all.
And and guys, again, I wanna stress what Stephanie's saying, that we have to really think about how this can go. And you know, there's been a lot of talks behind the scenes about Boston post of going into receivership. I don't really know. You know, because we were experiencing that here in Randolph as well, um, that we were low, you know, we were underperforming. Then they kind of, um, and Stephanie, maybe you have the right language um, that uh, the Department of Education kind of remove those barriers about um, about tiers, what will make a school district or or
It's a certain tiered, like, is a tiered approach on like whether you're meeting the criteria and then and then like if you're in a certain tier, then you go into receivership. And then um,
You're uh, and and some, and some of us, some schools may not even need to go into receivership.
Those schools, the schools are tiered, but then a district is tiered. And so like, those schools um, are are lower tiered, so obviously like tho- those schools are doing worse. And then then there's the district. And if the district itself falls into a certain category, then that district goes into receivership. So I don't know if Boston is there yet, but I know that there are some schools within Boston that are doing um, poorly, but um, I don't think Boston is there yet, but I would hate to see Boston go into receivership. I mean, that
Right, it's too big, it's too big.
Like split himself in half to like deal with that, cause that's like, that is a big job.
I don't think it'll ever happen, honestly. I I know that here in Randolph, we, because of the change in the tiers, that we do need, we did need um, some interventions as they, some they use now. That we had a few schools here who needed state interventions and the teachers were retrained and given these resources to kinda do better in 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 the job and and and, you know, it worked, you know, that one school has done, has improved by a lot. Um, and I think that that's been happening. Um, and I think that they're trying to work on making sure the school districts don't fall into receivership because I think that if any school district can teach us about what's happening is in receivership is Lawrence Public Schools. Literally, like you gotta follow that because that school district, I pray for the parents in Lawrence Public School. I send them tons, tons of hugs and love because you know, honestly, guys, sometimes some school districts are better than others. Um, and sometimes, you know, our kids are doing way better than some other students in other school districts and have some opportunities that many other schools don't have, even in schools that are in a deficit already. You know what I mean? So it's, it's interesting, but again, like, we just here in here, just kinda talking to you guys to think about having parents think about your thought on this issue. It's a big topic. You know, there was just a hearing. When was it, yesterday? Or the day before yesterday? For, on the school committee? There was just a hearing not long ago, right?
I think that on September first was the last school committee meeting, I believe. In Boston? And now we're, and another thing is like, we're in a very good, um, well, I mean, it's a horrible time, but at least now we can do things through Zoom. Before you had to actually go in physically to a school committee meeting. Um, so we can, at least we can participate through Zoom now.
Right, right. And and give us that ability, give us that ability. Give us that ability to be engaged. And I mean, I don't know about you guys, but as parents, I find being able to attend some of these meetings more easier for me in the virtual world than physically being there because I can sometimes have my camera off and still, you know, bring my phone and follow my phone and still cook dinner. Put a load of laundry in, you know, or even be at, whether I'm at the grocery store, put my headphones on and kinda still keep you know, and and, you know, or even if I can't physically join the midi meeting, have the ability to send a test, a testimony, because for parents, it don't you know, go on the city of Boston website to the Boston City Council to see what meetings are happening and also in the Boston Public School Committee. And, you know, Randolph, unfortunately, that's one thing I can say that I'm displeased that in our community uh, we don't have that setup. So we don't have the ability to submit any testimonials or any comments before any meetings. So we don't have that here in the town of Randolph Public Schools. We do not have that. And that's one thing that I wanna give a big like clap to the city of Boston for adopting those a policy, cause these are things that people vote on to make sure that people like you and I have these abilities to be civically engaged that way.
Randolph can vote, uh, Randolph can, you know, talk to their school committee members and say, look, we want to be able to, you know, send in testimonials, you know?
Yep, and 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 let them know about hearings. You know, Boston does a really good job. I can tell you that. They do a really good job on hearings and promoting those hearings and having a Facebook uh, page that shares those uh, hearings and continuously promotes that ability for you to um, drop a testimonial in a Zoom link and not have to kinda go through so many barriers to get that information. But, you know, again, guys, we're just here as parents at, you know, advocates and all that, wearing multiple different hats and saying that, you know, think about this, make your own decision on this and understanding that it's a fifty-fifty. You know, we may be set back by this this decision, or we may go forward. And if we want to decide to really elect a school committee, we gotta think about who's gonna back up, who's gonna fund these campaigns. Who's gonna support um, candidates to jump into this race? Also, like, this is something that I didn't, I haven't even talked about, Steph, because for, I'm in Randolph. Just so the world knows, here in the town of Randolph, our elected officials, both on the town council and school committee man, school committee are not paid.
Oh, I was gonna ask you about that.
So part of one of the reasons why I ran for school committee was also, I'm like, wait, so you guys have individuals who stepped up to the plate? Who wanna be part of the conversation? And they're sitting in these meetings for hours. They're meeting with school representatives. They have to review budgets. You know, these individuals have their own children, their own families, homes, rent or mortgage to pay. They have jobs. And you're not paying them?
Yep, that's crazy. I know in Boston, they're paid, but very little.
Right, and then you think about the fact like, the amount of work that goes into it, because again, being a public official, guys, whether we agree with our public officials or not, the job is not easy. And I like to keep it real, because there are times that I do not agree with my, some of my elected officials. Um, and I may disagree with them, but at the end of the day, being mindful that that job is not easy. You're, you're in the public, you know, and I don't know if some of you guys be seeing when hot topics come up and somebody made a mistake. People come for you on social media. And that is not easy, because I know even in the work that we're doing with mass and caste and sometimes we have to say some things that, you know, cause we're hot and bothered. Um, and the, you know, whatever, and we have different op- opinions, you know, and we may take it to social media. But they deal with this on a larger scale. Their fault, their emails? Yo, if you think that, you know, like, let's see, if you think that your email folder, you know, look, you know, my email folder, right? Because, you know, my email folder says I have fourteen thousand emails here, right?
Yikes.
So imagine how many emails elected officials get.
Oh, my gosh.
They probably give fourteen thousand a day.
A day.
A day. These ones that are coming from everywhere, with different, whether it's good um, good ideas and giving good feedback of really nasty, I, you know, nasty responses to a bill or a policy that they, so it's not easy, right? But there, we, as parents, we have to be involved some way, somehow. Um, and have like a healthy balance, agree to disagree, disagree to agree. And coming into, you know, some solutions because, you know, I, I know for me, you know, I, when I ran for school committee, I ran on that, literally, because I was like, yo, what do you mean you're gonna appoint? And because there was already some issues that were concerning within the town council and the way some people were voting and how harmful it was for certain demographics of people. Um, I was like, we're not doing this. Um, you know, so we gotta, we gotta, we gotta pay attention to that. Um, and see if it's gonna hurt or it's gonna advance us to move forward and do what we have to do, especially in a big school district like Boston. They have so many schools, so many students, and, you know, we gotta, we gotta really think about that and really unpack that. Um, you know, maybe take polls. Everyone in different organizations or in your space, ask other people, the community, not just people that are civically engaged. Because I want, I want, I wanna also kinda stress on this, that even if you're not a super voter, even if you're not civically engaged, you are still a constituent. You're paying taxes, you live in a community, you're contributing to your community some way, somehow. So you're still a constituent. And you have, you have a civic right, you know, you you, people represent you even if you're a super voter or a non-voter. You should still be represented by people who are elected to represent your community, my community, our community. Right? So we gotta really think about this, because I, honestly, Steph, I'm gonna be real with you. I don't know. I'm a little like just knowing things, you know what I mean? Like, just knowing that certain districts vote more than others and how some districts underrepres- I don't have the representation and how, you know, low voter turnout and I just, you know, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know about that.
You know, are we better off just making sure we have a good mayor?
Just basically that, just let's start with that.
Propose a hybrid model, so I don't know, could we, you know?
A hybrid model for?
For the school committee, so electing half the school committee and then her appointing half the school committee or the mayor appointing half the school committee?
Honestly, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I mean, I I just I don't know, I just wanted to put out those, those options and just, just talk about the pros and cons of each. I think I'm I'm leading, I I think that we should elect the school committee, but holding, I'm holding us accountable. I think on- once it, once it happens, we need to go out and vote. I think that's the, that's the bottom line, like, we gotta go out and vote.
Yeah, and if you don't vote, we're just gonna be going back to the same old thing. And fighting to be like, okay, now we're just gonna appoint. And, you know, the democracy works really interesting. You know, because it is the voice of the people who makes, you know, things happen. Um, you know, and yeah, so pay attention, y'all. We just wanted to kinda have this conversation and just kinda stress the parents, the role of school committee members and the power that the school committee has. In representing your children, my children, all of our children in our communities locally. Um, and also knowing that the Department of Education also has a school board, right? Um, and understanding that those roles of those individuals in the seat. Um, because oftentimes, we get so stuck on, you know, uh, on, on, on other elected officials, like city councils, state representatives, you know, state reps, state senators, Congress. And we're, we always forget about the school committee. You know, we always forget that they are elected officials. They're public figures. Um, and, you know, like most things, you know, people, sometimes it just kinda feels like people don't value education, right? You know, and and I feel like we just kind of don't stress the importance of this and, you know, and stopping the school to prison pipeline and all those things that we continuously talk about. You know, how, you know, right now, we have this big issue in Boston Public Schools with the buses, you know? Many special education students are missing school and will possibly miss school for ten days, like mo- uh, uh, Autism Sprinter Parent Ambassador who was on a live stream with us yesterday, shared that she's been told it's gonna be ten days because they have to hire bus monitors and bus drivers. And her child gets door-to-door service. You know what I mean? But these are conversations that the school committee can help amplify and help plan and address and change future policies on these conversations and and build a relationship um, with the unions that represent the bus drivers, right? And 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 figure out a happy medium. Um, because every school year, there's always a bus issue and it's not just Boston. It's predominantly of, pri- primarily in school, large school districts. This issue happens and for parents that are not paying attention, you know, a lot of budget cuts happen during COVID. And many of our children have, are in schools right now with like one or two speech pathologists in an entire district. One or two ABAs for an entire school district. Right? So we're gonna feel the real pandemic after the pandemic, because those budget cuts and and for those that understand systems, it's like when you're, when as IEP parents, we all know when a certain service is taking out, taken out of your child's IEP to get it back, it feels like you gotta put on boxing gloves, like, what's up? Why, why, why we gotta go this far for you to give me back the service? And when we have the meeting, everyone was like, oh, no, we can just reconvene and we can talk about it and give you the service back. No, it's not as easy as that. It's not as easy as a smile that comes and they tell you, we can just reconvene. Don't worry, you can get it back. Yeah, no.
Yep, I've been to many of those.
So parents gotta understand that. And it's a lot to think about. So I don't know, y'all, you know, I don't know.
This was a great conversation, Jaheida. I mean, I really appreciate you get, putting me on so that we can talk about this, cause it's a lot. It's a lot.
It's a lot. And, you know, follow, 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 follow the work. Follow us, follow Autism Sprinter, follow Stephanie, follow any conversations, you know, listen to the media. You know, the media, you know, we all have our own different opinions about the media, but the media serves its role, right? Just like every other thing, the media has a role. And then, you know, they puts information out, we unpack it. We do our own research to kinda make sure that we're truly informed and understand the overall um, issue that's being presented. Um, you know, and and really pay attention to a lot of that, because I know there's, there's more and I think that we there's, there's more, and I think that we, again, please pay attention to this upcoming race. Um, you know, and since we're a nonprofit, we don't really get into like the endorsing and and, you know, we can't do that, but we can have the conversations as parents around the political stuff and what, how it impacts our children, our community. If we are uninformed and do not know um about certain information, um, you know, it, we gotta, we gotta stay on top of it, y'all. Love you, baby.
You love you. Bye.
See you.